Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on January 8th, 2013. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Agenda item number two, public input. Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Jill Congdon, 298 High Street. Speaking on behalf of the Southbridge Elementary PTA, I just wanted to welcome the new acting superintendent. Welcome, on behalf of the PTA.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you, and I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. First, I'd like to welcome everybody to come to our meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the old Southbridge High School on Cole Ave at 7:00 o'clock for our first PTA meeting of the new year. It's in room 200 in the old high school. There'll be games and activities for the kids to play and coffee for the adults, and we're welcoming everyone to our new PTA room. And there'll also be samples of butter braid breads, so everyone is welcome to come. The next thing I would like to invite everybody to is a screening and community potluck of the movie Including Samuel on Friday, January 25th, at the old high school cafeteria on Cole Ave. The potluck will start promptly at 5:30. We welcome everyone to bring a dish to share, and we'll have a little community gathering starting at 5:30. The movie will start at 6:00 in the auditorium. This movie, Including Samuel, is a brief blurb states that before his son Samuel was diagnosed with cerebral palsy, photojournalist Dan Habib really thought about the inclusion of people with disabilities. Now he thinks about inclusion every day. Shot and produced over four years, Habib's award-winning documentary film, Including Samuel, honestly chronicles the Habib family's efforts to include Samuel in every facet of their lives. The film also features four other families with varied inclusion experiences, plus interviews with dozens of teachers, young people, parents, and disability rights experts. The PTA will be providing childcare in the cafeteria with different activities and games for the kids to play. And there is a snow date of February 2nd. If schools cancel that day or if it snows, the Including Samuel movie will be shown on February 2nd, so we welcome everyone to attend. Teachers, parents, community members to come out and see the viewing of Including Samuel or just come and chit-chat and share some food, but we welcome everyone to come. And I'll pass out these flyers inviting everyone to come as well. The next thing I would just like to briefly talk about is we're still collecting box tops and labels for education. The submission date is March 1st, but on Friday, February 1st, we will be having a pizza party for the top class, top grade for each class at each school who collect the most box tops. And so far, I think we've collected this year about $3,400 in box tops. In labels, it's a little bit slow, it's slowly catching on, but with the labels, every label, Campbell's Soup label, Planters label, counts as a point, and the schools can get different rewards like smart boards, markers, pens, pencils. And we're also collecting Coke Rewards. So if anybody in the community has any of those, they can collect them, bring them to any of the elementary schools, and we'll be happy to take those. Also, we just sent out a letter on Monday that Southbridge School Night will be at the Worcester Sharks game Friday, February 22nd at 7:30. Tickets are $15 a person, and you can come and listen to Charlton Street School and West Street School choirs sing the National Anthem and "God Bless America." Tickets can be purchased at any school. We have order forms that I'll be leaving at the town hall and at each school and that were sent home with all the kids. $15 a ticket. Checks can be made payable to the Southbridge Elementary PTA. And if anybody has any questions, they can give the PTA call at (508) 344-8431 or email us at southbridgepta@gmail.com, and we're also on Facebook as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you very much.
And I'll pass these around.
Thanks. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Just state your name, please, and your address.
Rosalie C. Lamro, 689 Charlton Street in Southbridge. I have a couple of things that I'd like to say, so I'll try and make it quick. First, I just wanted to let you all know that I had the pleasure of seeing the school store, the brand-new school store at the new Southbridge Middle High School. Very nice. I saw it right before Christmas, and I don't know if a lot of parents know about it, but it is there and the prices are very reasonable, so good job on that. Another thing, on December 14th, the middle high school held its first middle school dance, and it seemed to me that was a great success. I had to walk in because my son didn't come outside when he was supposed to, and it was nice to see the kids smiling, really seemed enthusiastic about it. So great job to all those who were involved, and hopefully the school can continue to have fun activities like that in the future for the kids. On that note, there are some negatives with the positives. I did hear a lot of students were walking home from the dance that night. Having lived on Ellis Road in Southbridge, I know that area very well, and I know that a lot of people do drive very quickly on Gulf Road, it is not lit. Another concern is if there's no adults around, what a fabulous place for a fight to break out, and there would be nobody there to help intervene or anything like that. So maybe, I'm just saying for the future, maybe something can be worked out beforehand. I'd like to be a step ahead of the kids, so then nothing will happen. Try and stop something from happening before it would happen. Back on a positive, on February 16th, at the Knights of Columbus, I along with the support of the Southbridge Middle High School Booster Club will be holding its first annual Bago/aka Cornhole Tournament to raise funds for two golf carts for the new fields at the school. Flyers are now available. I do have some here. They're available through the school, through the Booster Club, via Facebook, or through For those that are not interested in playing in the tournament but would like to help contribute towards the tournament for the golf clubs, we will be raffling off a set of Bago boards with the bags. Raffled will be held the night of the tournament. You do not need to be present to win. Tickets will be $3 each or four for 10. The boards have been made by Justin Lamro, and the design has been made by Jason Boucher, both of Southbridge. One of the boards will have Gronk catching the ball, while the other will have Brady throwing the ball with Belichick watching in the background. In a couple of weeks, I'll have the tickets along with the pictures of these, so they'll be available for purchase, so we are hoping for as much support from the community as we can get for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening for public input? Anyone else for public input tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number three, meeting called to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Max?
Dr. D'Amico.
Present.
Mrs. Donovan.
Present.
Mr. Lazo.
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Present.
Dr. O'Leary.
Present.
Mrs. Principay.
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you, we're all present. Agenda item number five, approval of the minutes of the regular school committee, December 11th, 2012. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Principay, second by Mrs. McLaughlin. Are there any corrections or errors to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven in favor. Moving on to agenda item number six, chairwoman's announcements. This evening, there are no announcements. Agenda item number seven, reports, representative of the student advisory committee, Ms. Faith Macharia.
Hi. This past week, when we had vacation, there was a basketball tournament for both the boys and girls. Diversity girls beat Grafton and took third place, and diversity boys beat Abbey Kelly High School. Tutoring for middle school starts this Thursday. Student Council and National Honor Society will be hosting that, and it will be in the library, so from 2:30 to 3:20, so they can have enough time to catch the bus to home. And lastly, there is a concern among students in TV production class. Apparently, the equipment that was supposed to be here before break is not here, and well, some are still new, so we're kind of wondering if it's going to be here this year or not.
I'm sorry, Faith, I couldn't hear you very well. Can you just repeat that last?
TV production class, there was equipment that was supposed to be here before break for all the activities that we're supposed to do, and it was not here, so we're just wondering if it's going to be here this year or not.
All right. Well, I'll take a look into that for you, and I'll let you know.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Faith. Moving on to agenda item number eight, school committee reports. A, curriculum subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you very much. Madam Chair, I have a quick report. The curriculum subcommittee did meet on December 18th, 2012. Present were myself, members Dr. D'Amico, Dr. O'Leary, as well as our alternate member, Lauren McLaughlin. Also in attendance were our acting, temporary acting superintendent, Mr. Wigan, curriculum director, Amy Allen, and then we had some wonderful people from the public, Robert Caprera, Wallace McKenzie, Ken Pelham, Anthony Bruisma, Gus Steves, and Maureen Doyle. The first order of business was that we discussed the Read-a-Thon to be held at the middle high school. Amy Allen described to us that part of our accelerated improvement plan is very curriculum-based, and one of the new aspects to that plan is promoting literacy. So we had a very, very good discussion on ways to promote or boost literacy specifically in the middle school arena. So we talked about having a Read-a-Thon. Ms. Allen had some wonderful packets that she shared with us on ways that we could go about doing it, maybe including student groups such as the Junior National Honor Society or Student Advisory Councils to help us with that. We talked about the wonderful facility that we have there with the new auditorium, that perhaps we could use that, you know, our facilities as a way of, again, promoting this activity and finding a way that maybe we could also incorporate the Read-a-Thon into part of the curriculum itself to provide some rigor to the program. So that's something that will be ongoing and that we'll be looking at. The second item of business was our discussion on the declamation contest. Again, Dr. D'Amico, we agreed with her that we would like something like that to, again, have academic rigor, so that is something that we will be working on. We feel that it can extend to all children, especially including our ELL students, to promote speaking in public and with the hopes of perhaps creating some type of debate club down the road for our middle school, high school, which we think would be wonderful for the students. And then finally, our last discussion was talking about creationism in the classroom. Some concerned citizens were asking that whenever the theory of evolution is discussed in our classrooms, that creationism and similar theories also be discussed. Again, we had a wonderful discussion about all that, but the subcommittee felt as a whole that at this point in time, it was best to follow state and federal guidelines relative to curriculum, that there is definitely a place for that in other disciplines, albeit world religions or philosophy or mythology, but discussing something that is faith-based and not scientifically proven should not be in a science classroom. So that's how that issue got resolved, and we left at quarter to nine, so we had a very, very good meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all.
Thank you. B, policy subcommittee, Mrs. Principay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a meeting scheduled for the 16th of January at 6:30 PM, 25 Cole Ave in room M114. There are quite a few policies, and I think one of the things that we will be doing that night is prioritizing the ones that, all of the ones that we need to work on. Some of them are fiscal management, attendance, intruency, bus transportation, harassment policy, both sexual and regular harassment, if there's such a thing, field trip policy. So we'll prioritize and begin that evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Budget, Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee, Dr. D'Amico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We held a meeting in December and identified at least a couple of issues that we have to follow up on, and it pertains on recent budget activity, especially on the instructional salaries item, where we definitely need to analyze in a little more detail the pattern of spending for our staff and analyze the staffing for current and proposed programs, so we'll be following that based on Mr. Wigan's report. The second one was what Mrs. Principay mentioned. I think as a district, we really need to implement either new policies or policies that other districts have developed already to add to our fiscal management to avoid any potential actions of the school district that can lead us into trouble. We have worked hard enough to get out of trouble, and there's absolutely no need to be ending in any kind of danger of finishing the year in the red, and I think that's prudent. So a couple of reports are going to be coming up, and I hope to be scheduling next committee meeting for the third week in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Collective Bargaining Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay?
Thank you. We are in negotiations with the Teachers Association. We have a meeting tomorrow evening and again on the 23rd. Thank you.
Okay. And finally, Communication, Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We held our last meeting on December 10th. At that meeting, we discussed some ongoing projects that we have been talking about for a little bit of time. Parent surveys, which is my understanding that those are going to be worked on next week with the curriculum director and our acting superintendent. In the meantime, the main focus of that meeting was to discuss holding a series of parent forums in the schools and the community to allow parents the opportunity to get some information about the Accelerated Improvement Plan and also to gather feedback on the district, the state of the schools in the district. So with that being said, we have created a flyer, and these will be going out if they have not already. I know my daughter's brought them home today. So there are going to be 10 forums in the community. Eastford Road School will be on Monday, January 14th, one at 9:00 in the morning, one at 6:30 PM. Charlton Street School will hold the forums there on Tuesday, January 15th at 6:30, and then the following morning, Wednesday morning, the 16th at 9:00. West Street School will hold the forum for them on Thursday, January 17th at 6:30 PM, and again Friday morning at 9:00. And the Southbridge Middle High School's forum will be held on Monday, January 28th. We're going to have one at 9:00 in the morning, another at 6:30 PM. If people cannot make those forums, we have two out and about in the community. Friday, February 1st at 10:00 AM at the Southbridge Community Connections Office on Main Street and at Jacob Edwards Library on Main Street on Saturday, February 9th at 10:00 AM. We'd like as many people to attend as possible, so we can share information with you and you can share information with us. And what we'll do with the information that we gather is to begin to look for common threads, common trends, common concerns, common successes, and we'll work to prepare a report for this committee, which will also be made public. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number nine, this evening, we have an introduction. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bassan Nebroko, our acting superintendent of schools. Mr. Bassan?
Thank you. Glad to be here. Last week has gone by very quickly. I've managed to visit most of the schools. Today, I had the pleasure of addressing faculty at high school and middle school, middle school, high school, I'll get sure I get all of this correct. And then yesterday, I was at a workshop with the Charlton School faculty and addressed them, and my goal is to meet with all of the faculty at the schools by the end of next week. And I've also been meeting with members of the school committee, which is critical for someone in my position to be able to talk individually with the school committee members to find out what their goals are, find out how we can go about working together to accomplish them and so on. So I've met with five of the seven, and the next two are scheduled within this week and hopefully next week. So that's one of the goals, is to work and meet and outline the priorities of the school committees, school committee members individually. So that's been one of the important items that I've had. And then obviously, I've been meeting with the faculty and today and staffs and so on. Today, we had a district leadership meeting, and my goal is to meet regularly, weekly, with all of the district leadership meeting team, at least two hours on Tuesday mornings, and that way we'll make sure there are no surprises for anybody. Everything's put on the table, and people have an opportunity to hear and discuss items that are of critical importance to the Southbridge Public Schools. So that's been my week.
Great. Thank you. Our second presentation was Ms. Gillian Carroll, the assistant principal, but I don't see her in the audience this evening, so we'll put her on to the next agenda, and hopefully she'll be able to come and we'll be able to meet her. Next, our presentations. I don't believe we have any presentations. Do you have anything this evening?
No.
All right, so we'll move on to the report of the superintendent. Any other reports that you have for us this evening?
Yes. I think a very important one is that tomorrow at the middle high school, our local police department, in conjunction with local and regional police and the state police, will be holding a very important training session in crisis response. This is an opportunity for our police department and the state police to become acquainted with the physical structure of the new building and to practice an appropriate response in case there's some sort of untoward situation that occurs at the high school. And I guess this is our, just notice to the community, we've sent phone calls out and say that if you see many police cars, vans, and a whole sorts of activity outside of the new middle high school, don't panic. It's a training exercise, an important training exercise, so that they will be familiar with the physical terrain, the school, and the appropriate responses they will be doing. So I think it's really important that people go by and recognize the police department working in conjunction with the schools is very concerned about the safety and welfare of all of the kids, and here's an opportunity for them to practice that. And also with that, due to that conflict, which was said, we've had to reschedule the parent-teacher conferences because we couldn't hold them at that site, nor could we hold them at the old building because of the fact that everybody is up to date, computerized, and the grays or so on are all held on that, and we couldn't bring that over there. So in one respect, this might even have a silver lining, that the union has agreed that the three hours that they were missing will be used by us after school at a time that may be more convenient for more parents to come to it rather than 12:00 in the middle of the day. So we'll make sure that we notify the parents at least two weeks before the rescheduling so they can make whatever appropriate arrangements to be there. So in that respect, rescheduled, and it's been, that took three days because we tried to come up with creative solutions to it, and every time, the best-laid plans of mice and men, something, some new information came up, so we kept reworking. So the high school administration, the chief of police, myself, maintenance, we all worked together on this, and I've been very pleased with the cooperation of all those people I've come in contact with. So I think everyone has the best interests of the kids at heart. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have report of the Director of Finance and Operations, please.
No report. I think there's a couple of items I'll discuss under actions.
All right. Moving on to school committee actions. A, vote to approve an ABA, Applied Behavior Analyst Paraprofessional position at Eastford Road School for the purpose of an individual education plan. Do we have a motion?
We'll move.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Lazo, seconded by Mrs. Principay. Do we have discussion? Dr. D'Amico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just on the district website looking at the open positions, and I wonder, is this position one of those that have been advertised on our website?
This had been advertised for some time. It's difficult to find an ABA-certified paraprofessional, which is one of the reasons it did take some time to find this. So yes, this would have been one of the positions that had been advertised.
Some of my question is, I don't remember a school committee voting on positions that have been approved, advertised. It's an action that is taken when we find a suitable candidate, so I wonder why is this item today on the agenda?
Well, I think frequently, we will advertise an anticipated opening, and perhaps our mistake for not listing it as anticipated. It is something that's required legally by an IEP. I would say in this particular case, as far as, if I may, get into the funding of it, there are really sort of three sources of funding to more than cover this. There was a job coach that in September was let go, and we did not fill that position, and the savings up to this point in time are approximately $9,000 for that position alone. There were also two other tutors who took voluntary leave of absence essentially from about mid-November through the end of December. That's about another $5,000. So basically, there's $14,000 there. This position would be well less than that for the remainder of the year because it's a paraprofessional class position.
Maybe the last question, would this be one of the positions that was added to the staff that we anticipated at the beginning of the year, in addition to the staff, and it was not a replacement?
We spent a lot of time going through the staffing, and one of the reasons is before you tonight is that I felt it was in fact a new position. It was not something that was previously budgeted. We certainly discussed that at the last Budget Transportation and Facility Subcommittee meeting. And again, felt it was appropriate to bring forward both the position for your consideration as well as the funding source.
Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Wigan. Do we have any current employees that also carry this designation? The ABA?
I would yield to the Director of Pubule and Personnel Services. Or the principal. Both of them are in the audience, if I might.
For this particular need, we need a paraprofessional that has ABA training. The paraprofessionals that we currently have in our school have been trained solely through hands-on training and the professional development that our school has offered through the ABA team with Mrs. Hamel and the ABA people that we have brought in from the different agencies. We've had three different ABA people throughout the last three years. So to have a person with the qualifications that they are, that they do have ABA training from a college that is accredited, that was very hard to find.
Okay, thank you. I guess the reason I ask that is not included in our packet for this evening was the job description, and I didn't know what will this, I've read your letter, so I understand the need and why this is being brought forward, but I still am unsure exactly what the job description is and what will that person be doing.
Ms. Donovan, I was part of the posting for the job description because, in fact, we have brought in-house some BCBA folks who are certified, but in the course of determining the need for this particular ABA position, I came to understand that we actually did not have a policy with respect to the amount of accreditation and experience that we would look at with respect to an ABA paraprofessional. Ms. Shaw is also correct in that the ABA professional, paraprofessionals that we do have at this time have all been trained in-house, so we are solely by our current BCBAs and the previous ones through ongoing professional development right now. So over the course of time, they will, we will be able to build some of our own internal capacity. So what we did is we did a, and of course, with paraprofessionals, we can request highly qualified, but with respect to ABA certification, what we looked at was precedences with other districts in terms of requirements for ABA paraprofessionals. What was the standard and the best practice and the type of accreditation and training that those folks had. So we, I'm sorry, you don't have the posting because it was very specific, and based on some very strong and significant criteria around the type of training that we were requesting, we were looking for someone with between at least one to three years of experience with a certain level of accreditation, but also who had paraprofessional experience. So that took some time.
Okay, thank you very much. I had a similar question to Dr. D'Amico of how this position was going to be funded, but my last question was, it appears to me that this position is specifically for a one-on-one one-on-one type of situation. There is a need for this child, and I understand that. What if this child, for whatever reason, leaves the district? What happens to that paraprofessional?
Well, that's a good question, and I think that in my short time with the district, I have not had time to look at, you know, past precedences with one-on-one ABA paraprofessionals. I can say that this particular student is in the integrated preschool program, so we have to sort of schedule some eventuality for a long-term. It is an ABA paraprofessional who is working with the student to transition to a more mainstream environment and will probably be a long-term type of experience because of that. I can't, I can't speak, and maybe Mr. Wiggins can, to what happens with individual line items. What we do before we even post for something like this, and what we did do, is we took a look at some of the openings that were already existing in order to fund it. You should know that the IEP and the development of the IEP was done after the original budget in September, and the IEP wasn't even signed till most recently. It was developed from the end of September, and it took at least a month to develop and edit that. So it was post-budget approval.
Let me respond to this, okay. Obviously, there are questions concerning the budget, which are very important, and also understanding appropriate roles and responsibilities via the school committee and administration. It becomes very important that any new position that is proposed come with a form, and would entail, entitled a position description, a budget code, and duration. And generally speaking, when you hire someone on a grant, for example, that person, my experience has been that, that that person is hired only for the duration of the grant. Otherwise, we end up inheriting people without an appropriate budget for them. And when you have a position that's rare, one-on-one, generally speaking, you have a para that's assigned to the special ed department and can be used for more than one student, because I think a one-on-one is a misnomer generally. I mean, parents and communities sometimes think that, that's my para, it's not. So in the case situation, a hypothetical situation, that if that child moves for whatever reason, we would examine the position and that there is no longer a need for it, and we'll give them appropriate contractual, you know, 30 days, whatever we've agreed to, and then we can move on from there. So it's on a need basis rather than an open-ended situation. So I think it's very important that we're very clear whenever a new position is there, position description, need, analysis, budgeting code, whether it comes from grants or whether it comes from the regular budget. So you're all comfortable because ultimately you're responsible to the community for what, how the dollars are spent, and that's a very important fiduciary responsibility that you have. So any new positions from this day forward will come with that kind of, and you will get it in advance so you can have the opportunity to question it before we come here, because I think it'd be very inappropriate for last second, unless there's an emergency, that happens every now and then, we understand that, and we'll state that it's an emergency. But I've been looking at that, so clearly it's important to know exactly how many people we have, how much they cost us, and will we have enough to make sure we can pay them all the end of the year, right? That's your question, and I think we'll make sure that the next meeting that all that is taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Donovan?
Yeah, I just had one more, and again, pardon my ignorance relative to special ed. This is kind of a new piece for me. If a parent requests something and it becomes part of the IEP, does that make it mandatory that we have to absolutely do it or provide that service?
Let me just touch on that. So we don't want to put, I've had lots of experience with, these are professionals, and they're going to be very wary of the need of their child, and they're going to bring people in who have experience dealing with that particular issue and so on. Parents, rightfully so, should advocate for their children and should advocate very strongly for their children. But it's our responsibility as professionals to ensure that the appropriate setting is created, the appropriate people are hired, and that the IEP, once it becomes part of the IEP, yes, we are mandated to do. So we have to be very careful and work closely with the parents, the advocates, and everyone to ensure that within what we have, within the resources we have, we provide an appropriate IEP. And I expect parents to advocate. It's your kid. You should. And you know, and if you don't, then I worry. Okay, so I think that they will ensure that what's appropriate is done.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
And it's a very tricky issue because it's, it's, at times, you know, that the proposed remedy isn't necessarily the best one, and things change. So that's why they go back and review it on a manual basis.
Thank you very much. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Dr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To me Shaw, I have one question pertinent to something you said. Help me out a little bit. Sorry. You had commented that you had three, tell me if I'm wrong, three paras in three is?
Not three paras, three different ABA organizations.
Oh, I misunderstood. I thought you said ABA individuals that had come and gone. I was wondering why there was such a turnover.
Yes, three different organizations the district has had, three contractual, Mrs. Culligan could probably speak on each better than I, but there were three different organizations that we've had. Now we have our own in-house people.
Gotcha.
And they are, they are working out wonderfully. Miss Net, Vicki Net, and Maureen Soto, they're a wonderful addition to Ms. Hamel and our past program for Ms. Fleming. It's a great, great group.
So what I'm getting is, I understood as a potential problem, you guys already saw some time ago and have made moves to, it's already done. Nice job. We brought it in-house instead of all this replace, replace, replace. Kudos to you guys.
I think we find that we do very well.
I appreciate that.
They're located within the educational setting, so they can respond more on a daily basis. They get to know our staff, they get to know the parents and the child much closer, and we find that the quality improves 100% when, as opposed to subcontracting things out.
Excellent. And the second question may not be so much to us, the Superintendent, or anyone else that can answer that. Just to reiterate, sometimes a one-on-one is, as I'm ascertaining from this particular case, a real one-on-one, and oftentimes, a one-on-one may be advocating for a number of different students in a day. Is that right?
A one-on-one will work with the student they are assigned with?
A one-on-one is always a one-on-one.
Pretty much, but that doesn't mean that they are solely dependent on that one person, because we want to make sure that that child is able to always have that independence and grow with that independence. So that child needs that, that, our goal is to let that child develop as an individual so that they know they can do it by themselves. That's the goal. When the child needs and gets to that point, of course, we have to ease off a little and have the para or the one-on-one stay back a little bit, and they help anyone. If they're in a center group.
That's what I'm asking.
That para can tend to another child's needs. If that child's having a little difficulty, they instruct that child, just like as a mother, if my nieces and nephew came over, I wouldn't just help my own child, I would help the whole. So that is how we and our environment for early childhood would handle that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I also want to clarify that what we're working with, with respect to one-on-ones, and in particular, this particular professional with ABA, is a means to provide access to the curriculum for the student in question. And a student with, and we can talk about, you know, there are many different kinds of disabilities and impairments, but the one-on-one is there to help provide access to the curriculum. So what we typically do is we work over the long range on independence plans and fading of that person. But initially, when that person comes in, we do a lot of work in data collecting, and part of this has to do with some of our response to intervention and determining what's working and responding to various interventions that do work. As Ms. Shaw said, sometimes when something is happening in a center-based situation, there is less need for that. In this particular case, a one-on-one, I do have to say, was required and was not done, I was not participatory in those meetings, it was done by my predecessor and the previous team chairperson. But in this case, I think that we could rightfully say that this one-on-one is there to help provide access to the curriculum to a student that is in and integrated from a more restrictive setting to a less restrictive setting. So you also have to take into consideration the environmental supports that are being provided, and when you typically, when you go from a very restrictive to a less restrictive setting, in the beginning of that circumstance and as that transition goes along, you're required to do a lot more individualized support of that student. Then you evaluate it, you look at the interventions, you see what's working, and you begin to have discussions about fading that one-on-one over time. And those are some of the things that we're going to be bringing, I'm going to be bringing into the district, is a little bit more data collecting and environmental supports for students to take a look at how we can best support them in the most, least restrictive environment.
I thank you for that, and just to clarify that one thing you just said, as the child progresses.
Yes.
And, you know, performs well appropriately, and we fade the.
Yes.
Tutor fades back, does that person fade to another IEP?
They can, because we have had such success with our one-on, with our one-on-one, even a preschooler today that I had in, for the last two and a half years that I've been here, who has had a one-on-one. And just for example, she has now gone from a one-on-three. So that fading has worked in, and it has been beautifully seen with our children, and she's just, you know, she's just come so far. That's just one of our examples of our many glorious children that we have, but, you know, they really grow.
Let me show on the other side of that, not the child, and I know that's important, but the tutor, the person, that person will go on to another child in need. Is that what I'm saying?
Yes, because, because we currently are the short-staffed in the past program. That person will, that has faded, is now going to be full-time for, in the past classroom because of the amount of students we have this year. We have five kindergarten students and six preschool students in past this year, so it, you know, it's a busy place.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Dr. D'Amico?
Through you to the Superintendent. Am I correct in assuming that even though clearly you have had not much time to review any of these requests, that you are supporting the addition of this position for the program?
I think that they've expressed a need for it, and then in order to be compliant with that, it's important that, you know, that the process will be adjusted, but the need is there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yeah, thank you. I just didn't know if at some point down the road, either Ms. Culligan or, you know, through Mr. Nebberco, if we could have some type of presentation on the RTIs that you're talking about and the BCBAs and the ABAs. I know there's a lot of anacronyms, and I apologize for my not knowing a whole lot about special ed. It's an area that I need to learn more about so that I can be more useful up here. So at some point down the road, if we could just have a brief overview of what our special ed department looks like, what special education is in general, what these acronyms mean and how we are using it in our schools, I think that would be very helpful.
That's the will of the committee. I think it's important that the community understand with less jargon, okay? I mean, it's like alphabet soup sometimes, and each profession obviously has their code words, but we're going to minimize that, and I think not only special ed, but the various other departments. So we want to work on a schedule so different departments can have a 30-minute presentation. So not only the school committee can be fully aware of what they do, but also the community that's watching on television can see how many good things are being done in the school system. So I just had a brief conversation with the manager and so on, that we need to put more ballgames, more activities and so on on the cable TV. It's a benefit to everyone. It's there, let's use it. And so the first thing we're going to do is put the lunch menus on there. Everybody has to eat, right? So it's there, so you might as well, the kid loves peanut butter and jelly, tomorrow we won't make it. So yes, we will do that, and particularly an area that's unfortunately, through semantics, it becomes confusing. And so they're very careful to ensure, so I think it's important that they both do it because we're not only talking about the special ed department, we also talk about early childhood, and by law are required to provide services from three years old on up. It's been identified. So I think that, that those two programs can, can work very, very well together. So preschool program, I don't think many people are aware that we provide and so on, all of those services, and particularly the special needs issues, and then work with that, okay?
That'd be great.
So I think we'll develop a schedule, present it to the school committee, and then you guys can tell me who you want to see first and so on, okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, Max?
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion passes. School Committee Action B, move that the Southbridge School Committee approve a lease between the Southbridge Public School District and the Worcester Community Action Council dated January 7th, 2013, for an initial term ending in June 30th, 2023, with additional terms and conditions outlined in the lease document, and to authorize the acting superintendent to sign said lease document.
I will.
Let's just get a motion, then we'll respond.
Second?
So have a motion from Mr. Lazo and a second from Mrs. Principay, and we'll have a discussion with Mr. Wiggins at this time?
Yeah, I would ask that the committee postpone action on this till its next meeting. The Worcester Community Action Council communicated with me yesterday, late yesterday, and their attorney did not get back to them in a timely fashion, and there are a couple of changes that they would like to propose, and there is one of those changes actually, I think, would stimulate, would possibly indicate a change we want to make on our part as well. So I would ask if we could postpone it to the next meeting.
Okay. Have a motion to postpone?
So move.
I am.
All right, so we have a motion to postpone by Mr. Lazo, seconded by Mr., Dr. O'Leary, pardon me. Any discussion on the postponement? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, we'll postpone that. Is the next meeting appropriate, Mr. Wiggins, or do we need more time?
Next meeting should be fine.
All right, so we'll postpone that to the 20 seconds. Agenda, next agenda is unfinished business? Is there any unfinished business this evening? Mr. Lazo?
Just a quick question, maybe to the Superintendent, to the business manager. There was a meeting at the council level, and it was a discussion about unemployment. At an unemployment level, I should say, an unemployment number was given out, and when I looked at the unemployment number, I said, geez, we haven't been really laying off teachers. Why do we have such a high unemployment number coming from the school side? Can somebody explain that to me, because I'm totally out there on that one?
I'm trying to, I want to be careful how I respond because it is, some of this would regard people, and I, there were non-certified personnel who were terminated for cause. I think that's some of clearly what you're seeing there, having looked at the list. There are a couple of folks on that list I know that have been there for a long time. And a couple of those are professional, again, a couple of those were non-certified staff. But I could provide, I could certainly provide the committee with a complete analysis of it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Dr. D'Amico?
I would have a question of the, on the same topic. Are these recent hires that it was discovered that they were not certified and therefore not appropriate, or were they longer-term employees?
When I say non-certified, I guess like, maybe a better term would be non-professional staff, support staff. That's really what I'm talking about when I'm talking about some of the folks that are on that list.
So they would be people we have hired thinking that they possess some qualifications and they haven't, or am I misunderstanding? Because when you say non-certified, that gets a little confusing.
Well, that's why I said they were terminated for cause.
Okay, but not because of the qualifications?
Not because of their qualifications. They did something to cause their termination.
Okay.
Any, Mr. Lazo?
One other quick question. There was a discussion as far as the committee in the school system taking on the Worcester County Action Council with the early childhood intervention at the high school. To my knowledge, and this is to the business manager, again- To my knowledge, and this is to the business manager again, I was under the understanding that we were taking this on so the town manager could liquidate the building. Am I right in that interpretation, or is there something else going on that I don't know?
That was my understanding as well. My understanding is that the town manager had two buildings that had started occupied, McKinnon Street, am I correct in saying that?
Pleasant Street.
Pleasant Street. Okay. MRC Street. And that while they occupied those buildings, in fact, I think at one point in time, there was a prospective buyer for one of those buildings. It was hard to negotiate a purchase, and we had the space, there was some synergy there, obviously, the income would help defray the costs of operating Coal Avenue. So it was, it seemed like a win-win for the town. The town would free up those buildings, which it needed to sell, wanted to sell. We got tenants, which helped create the 25 Coal Avenue Educational Center, and again, that income helps to defray the costs of the utilities, the custodial, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
I think if we want to have a meeting with the town, I can set up something with the town manager and the chairperson, and we can have a joint meeting perhaps, and maybe some of those answers can be resolved.
I think that's, Madam Chairman, I think that's a good idea. I think the, the council is, is doing their job, and we are doing our job, and maybe we should get together to try and coincide when you hear something like, we're stealing the tenant, and I sat there and I go, that's not my understanding, or if we have a high unemployment number and it's, we've got to explain. I mean, we would, I think we would benefit by opening up a joint meeting of some sort. I know there was discussion on the water company building. I know early on, we were talking about centralized shipping and service throughout the town for the whole town. If there's a breakdown in that communication, I think it would be great to, to start that discussion, to really clear the air whether it's in the best interest of the community because it's all out of one pot.
Okay. I'll have a meeting set for the next meeting. I'll have a date for us to meet with them.
Thank you.
Dr. Domingo?
Madam Chair, if appropriate, I think we can include these items on the subcommittee agenda for the budget transportation and, and facilities, if appropriate, and.
If it affects our budget, yeah.
In assembling, in assembling the agenda for the next meeting, it might, it might be more appropriate to start there and then take recommendations to the school committee.
Okay. Thank you.
And just something on unfinished business. Again, I've noticed that we haven't posted any, any minutes since September, mid-September on our website, and that it probably slipped somebody's mind because it, they were quite regular all the way through summer and through September, and then nothing is there anymore.
All right. I'll make sure with Mrs. Fields that we.
And I would strongly suggest that we post subcommittee minutes as well, even though they're not officially voted on, but they're documents that represent what we discuss and what we do.
I'll look into that also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with unfinished business this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business, and the only new business I have this evening is our next regular school committee meeting, which will be held on January 22nd, 2013, here in the council chambers. Is there any other new business? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd just like to take this opportunity to welcome Mr. Nebberco to the district. It's a pleasure to have you here. I had my one-on-one with the acting superintendent last Friday. I learned an awful lot, and I'm very, very optimistic for the district and his hands. So I appreciate, appreciate you coming here. And the next thing, I just wanted to let the community know that on December 19th, there was the candlelight vigil for, in honor of Sandy Hook Elementary School. As part of that, I helped coordinate, along with Town Counselor Sean Moriarty, the peace ornament project. I just have to say that the ornaments that we collected numbered the thousands. I want to say that the middle high school alone was responsible for nearly a thousand ornaments, and when I got those back, they were each, I expected people to write something nice on the ornaments perhaps, a sentiment or a hope for peace in the new year, and they were beautifully decorated, they were laminated, and we're adding those to the, all the ones that we collected at the vigil that night. Newtown had requested a, everybody stop sending things for a time, but I've inquired, and our shipment is ready to go out, and we look forward to sending that to them as a gesture of friendship and goodwill from our community to theirs. I just wanted to give everybody an update on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Lazo?
I would just like to thank Mrs. McLaughlin. Job well done, along with the counselor. Terry Wiggins, in the replay, outstanding job, public speaking, very strong and compassionate. I too would like to thank the superintendent, the acting superintendent. I look forward to working with you. I'm meeting with you Thursday. I think it's nice to see a straight talker as a superintendent that is directed on the subject matter and very knowledgeable in those areas. And finally, I hope everybody has a new year, a good new year, and I'd like to thank Terry Wiggins. He has become a resident of the town of Southbridge, and Terry, I congratulate you and welcome the town of Southbridge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
You're welcome. Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if maybe this should have gone on unfinished business, but I'll throw it out here. I know at our last meeting, we had approved a bunch of positions, the science teacher and the math teacher and the interventionist. I was just wondering if going forward, it's something that we really haven't done, but going forward, I didn't know if it'd be possible to bring in the new hires or at least announce who the new hires are, and when we have people who retire or leave for whatever reason, if that also could be announced. I think that there's a lot of shifting around that is taking place in our schools, and we don't know who's where. And I think it would just be really good to know when there is a, a change in leadership or a new hire or somebody that gets, retires, it's important for the committee as well as the public to know. And I would hopefully, moving forward, announce, if that could be announced so that we could be kept abreast of transitions. Thank you.
That, that will be part, previously where I worked in Brockton, that was part of the superintendent's presentation. I would always announce the retirements, leaving of people, and the new hires, and then if it's, they want to be here, we're happy to announce and introduce them. But generally speaking, that's just a normal function of the superintendent's report, that it always is aware that so-and-so is the new math teacher at the high school, starting at this particular date, and then we go on through all of that. So that, I will make sure that's the part of the superintendent's report to the school committee on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Dr. Domingo?
I'll, I'll chime in with my welcome to the new acting superintendent. We have met already, spent an hour, I think, of very, very productive time. I'm looking forward to what's coming in the next six months, and.
We're from the same place?
Welcome again. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more, we will have no executive session this evening, so we'll have a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second?
All those in favor? Thank you, and everyone have a good evening.